I don't think it's stealing. All right, guys. We are going to go ahead and get our council work session going. We have one item on our work session agenda tonight, which is discussion of city council budget priorities for 2024.
Good evening. How is everybody? You've got a handout of the PowerPoint presentation that we'll run through this evening. This has also been uploaded to the packet and is available online. But we thought we would start out kind of our budget process. Last year, we got a little bit of a late start for a variety of reasons. And so this year, we're trying to do better and get a little bit of a head start. We've also talked about not having that formal council retreat, sometimes where we set those priorities and, you know, February or March timeframe. So we wanted to make sure that well in advance of when we really get into the nuts and bolts of our 2024 budget, that we have a chance to kind of at least touch base on the priorities that have been established. Make sure everybody's clear on what we're working on. See if there are things that potentially need to be adjusted or discussed as we head into 2024, so we can be kind of thorough in our look at all of that. So in the memo and then first slide, please. That's okay. So tonight, we'll just kind of go over, kind of follow the outline that was included in the work session memo that was distributed last week. We'll cover our recap, kind of things that were established and identified through the February 2022 retreat. Those things that were done in kind of the May timeline anticipating or looking forward to the 2023 budget. We'll talk about kind of that key performance area funding. We established those key performance areas last year through the retreat process and then have committed to really trying to tie our budget conversations and expenditures and allocations to those key priority areas. Talk a little bit of a preview about some of the things that, at least on the revenue side, we're tracking and watching and paying attention to as we head into the 2024 budget. Then we'll have an opportunity to just talk about what are we missing from your perspective, if anything? And then we won't have our next formal council budget work session until May 24th. So we'll take the feedback that we have tonight. And then we will spend the next six weeks or so really in earnest diving in as a staff and developing that budget so that when we come back at the end of May, we'll be ready to sort of present and really, really start that forward. So we're doing kind of this pre-work on the front end. And then our hope is we've, we've heard several of you who've said, don't drag the budget process out so long. Let's keep it condensed and as tight and concise as we possibly can. So we're going to work on trying to do that for 2024. Okay, next slide, please. So when we look at the project priorities that were established in kind of the half day retreat that we had in February of 2022, these were things that came out of the mayor's one-on-one meetings with you all shortly after she took office and just she met with you to kind of discuss and confirm your individual priorities or or objectives. We came back with that at that February retreat and identified these categories, the residential street program, pedestrian focused streets, sustainability and climate action plan implementation, commercial code enforcement, parks planning and implementation, small business partnerships and initiatives, solution for long-term feasibility of the Powell Community Center, a gateway solution, building codes update and development activity. So in the memo, just, you know, kind of have recapped and I pulled most of this information that was included in your, in your work session memo about sort of progress through 2022 and so far in 2023 from that year-end project status update that you received recently. So that's all there if you want to go back and look at that in more detail. But I think on the residential street program side, everybody's familiar the fact that we completed the 2022 program on time and on budget. We accelerated the design of 55th Street. We bid. And this evening, you'll be looking at awarding the contracts for that 2023 street preservation program. We know that came in significantly over kind of the $2 million target that we had identified when we put this residential street program together as part of the sales tax renewal initiative. We have the funds to be able to do that. And we had the conversation at our work session earlier this month in talking about trying to keep that program on track as much as we possibly can. But I think that's something that will be as, as we watch what happens and obviously there are always ebbs and flows and construction pricing and all of that. But I think that's certainly something that we'll need to be sensitive to as we move forward in the 2024 budget and looking at the five-year CIP for street program plans. So I think everybody has a pretty good comfort level about where we are in terms of residential street program, pedestrian focused streets. In 2022, we did complete that reconfiguration of Johnson Drive to help address many of that. And we've looked at kicking off the phase one of an ADA study to identify deficiencies throughout our existing street and sidewalk network. I think that work will pick back up as the weather is now. We're heading into spring and warming up. And then we'll have recommendations that will be able to factor in as we look at street projects or individual projects. Funds were also included in the 2023 budget to install the flashing stop signs at the 61st and Broadmoor to allow for kind of safer pedestrian crossings. That was something that's come out of conversations with the Wellstone residents in particular. You know, they would like to see a traffic signal. A traffic signal isn't warranted from an engineering standpoint. And so Olson's review, you may recall when we included that as a supplemental request in the budget was to their pedestrian activated stop signs. So those are in the works. Yep. And in the budget. So then when we thought about sustainability and climate action plan, the mayor appointed the Climate Action Plan Task Force, who developed a series of recommendations that were presented to you all, the goal being looking at one year and then their initial recommendations, which totaled 18, and were based on the climate action Casey's 2022 recommended municipal policy actions. Were presented and adopted or approved by you all last year. That work is moving forward. And I know the mayor's been talking with Emily and I about reconvening that group to start conversations about kind of three-year, five-year recommendations to follow. Kind of the most significant work that has happened to date in 2023 was the contract award for the update of the greenhouse gas inventory. And staff is currently coordinating and assisting the consultant in data collection effort. And we think that final report and deliverables will be ready in late April, early May for council's consideration. And that sort of forms that baseline that helps inform many of our other decisions. Commercial code enforcement, the neighborhood services officer's position was vacant from March to May of last year. The new neighborhood services officer has been on board and I think has done a good job of educating herself, becoming familiar with the community and our code enforcement priorities. But I think this is, this is one of those priorities where we need to probably come back and have some additional conversation around what is it that you would like to see? I mean, I think we've talked in the past about signage and some other things, but this is, this is one that I would sort of flag that needs some continued conversation so that we understand how to allocate resources to that area and develop more specific sort of performance or outcome tracking measures. Park planning and implementation, we're all familiar with all of the kind of wrap-up of the conceptual park planning for Mohawk Water Works, Broadmoor and Streamway Parks and the council's general approval of those designs. We completed the design for Mohawk Phase One. It's under construction. There are actually buildings that are now, if you saw the project update most recently, it's truly now coming out of the ground and expected to be completed in April of this year. You recently awarded the design contract for Phase Two, which will be underway. And our hope is to be as seamless as we possibly can in transitioning to the complete construction of all of those conceptual improvements identified for Mohawk. We renewed last year the 3.8 cent park recreation sales tax with a voter approval rate of almost 86%. We have awarded a design contract for replacement of the trail in Broadmoor Park. We're seeing some cost escalations there, but I, Penn and I are working on that and kind of final design and layouts. And so I think we should be able to proceed with the trail improvements. And the plan was, and it was funded in the CIP to replace that entire trail around the park. It was kind of the first, first improvement there. Recently awarded the design contract for Waterworks Park. And we expect to complete that in connection with the reopening of Rushton Elementary in August of 2024. We have a land and water conservation fund grant pending for the dog park that's was recommended for Streamway Park. It is currently under review. Penn advised earlier this week that the committee will, it will be presented to the committee in March this month or next month, which April, next month. And so by May, we should have a determination about whether or not we've secured grant funding for that project. There are funds earmarked both in general fund reserves and elsewhere in the park recreation CIP to move that project forward later this year. Small business partnerships and initiatives. We held the business listening forum in November of 2022 with approximately 18 businesses who attended. We emailed a follow-up survey to over 350 businesses. After the first of the year, we had only 13 surveys returned. And I will be sharing, we've got those results compiled and I'll share, I'll be emailing those out to you all tomorrow. We've already implemented, I think we've talked about this, a number of suggestions that, that were, we could kind of immediately leave the forum and implement related to communication. And we're working to rebuild the business directory on the website. Again, I think there were some concerns voiced at that forum about tenant landlord relations. We had asked at that forum and afterward through the survey process to please help us identify specifically where those were. I don't think we've, we haven't had a lot of additional direction with respect to that. So that's something we'll need to continue to follow up and see where appropriate or where we might have the opportunity to assist in resolving those issues. We had originally talked about having a work session on economic development issues in late January and postponed that. And so I think Mayor and I are really looking at trying to get a date set for that because I think again, tied into this, I think, are some of those commercial code enforcement issues, but the whole issue of economic development incentives, kind of that interaction with our business community is something that is probably the least fleshed out in terms of all of our priorities from the last couple of years. Gateway solution. That was in February of 2022. They had just come back and proposed, you'll recall that the next plan, so you know what transpired over the course of last year to get us to finally having that development agreement approved in January of this year. I, I reached out to the developer today. We've been touching base with them about every seven to 10 days just to monitor progress. And then they are having all the conversations with the equity partners and the banks and all of that, but I didn't have a more definitive update to provide this evening. So as soon as we have that, we'll be able to kind of share that back. The building codes update. I think everybody's familiar with requested or you actually approved the 2018 ICC codes and, and then passed the resolutions committing us to looking at the 2021, particularly the 2021 energy conservation code and bringing back some recommendations by fourth quarter of this year. We've, following the presentation that we had on that, we've made contact with or have collected information about the staff in Kansas City, Missouri, who worked on that project. I think if you'll recall, their implementation in Kansas City, Missouri wasn't to begin until July of this year. And so we'll make those connections to try to really have an understanding there. And then development activity, you know, that there wasn't really a lot of specificity around that particular objective. But as you know, in what we've reported already from 2022 year end, we set record levels of plan review and project review and development activity for the city. And so that's not slowing down. We're seeing a slowing of some projects or adjusting in timelines within reaction to some of the things that are happening with respect to financing in particular. But I think almost every day you have somebody, Brian, it's fair to say that's at least kicking tires, if not driving a car into the garage to have a quick look at it. So that's kind of recap. I'll stop there. Any thoughts, comments, questions about those priorities from 2022 or where we stand currently in relationship to any of those?
Or I think you might have skipped the feasibility study.
Oh, I did skip the feasibility study. Sorry. I sure did. So as you know, coming out of COVID in part due to the pandemic, we were seeing decreasing self-sufficiency at the community center. And that was creating sort of this ripple effect throughout the city budget, particularly the general fund, because that's where we subsidize the operations and have historically for that facility. So the council approved $40,000 in late 2022 to complete the feasibility study. Prose Consulting began work and in February of 2022. Project has taken six to eight months longer than anticipated primarily because our data, in many cases, our data inputs. This is what, what you will see when we get to the work session coming up in just a couple of weeks on March 29th is that the recommendations are very data-driven and business oriented. I mean, that was the goal in looking at developing these business plans, both for the facility overall and then for core program areas within that. And so our data was not as clean as I think it is in some other cities. And so the consultants spent a tremendous amount of time sifting through and organizing. And we are in the process of finalizing that report and we'll look forward to sort of engaging in those conversations here before the end of the month.
Any comments or questions for Laura on the first part? Yeah, Ken?
Couple of things with regard to the pedestrian focused streets. One of the things that we're getting comments on is especially during the summertime with, with the the pool, the crossing of Lamar from Walmer across kids coming across there, that crosswalk on Lamar is not really being observed as it should. And I don't know if there's a way in which we can improve that. And I know that Debbie Crane has brought up issues on Johnson Drive. Right? So kind of together, there's some spots in terms of pedestrian crossings that we might want to look at and highlight with regards to that particular matter. With regards to the the commercial code enforcement, one of the things that I've noticed is especially along the trail over here, the, the businesses that have their backs to the trail, there, there's just trash collected there. And I don't know if there's some way to, you know, enforce the, the code in regards to that. It just looks nasty. I don't know if you're, you're familiar with what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I think, I think so. I think part of it, at least in one particular block, is an issue of access to dumpsters that, that contributes to that. I think that's part of potentially what we'll be looking, we have that planning sustainable places grant that we were recently awarded to look at that entire corridor and sort of beautification and implementation of enhancements to that. And so I think as that comes forward, we'll have some plans and maybe some ideas and suggestions. And then I think you'll recall that once we have that plan in place, we can then pursue actually matching funding through planning, planning sustainable places for implementation of, of parts of those plans. So I think the combination of the planning sustainable places piece along with the it's whatever it is, PPS that, that is underway with Johnson County SMAC for that same section of the channel. I think we'll be seeing some ideas and solutions coming forward that will really help address just the overall aesthetics and functionality and you know, green, there's ideas for some green infrastructure, things throughout that corridor.
Okay. That's all.
Debbie?
On the trash level, 51st Street from Lamar to Woodson is awful. And it used to be, we'd go out twice a year with the Rushton students and do a walk-through and pick up trash. Now that the Russian students aren't there, it's compiling and it looks really bad. That's number one. Number two, where are we, where are we somewhere on the crosswalk between Johnson Drive and Riggs?
It's going to be part of the next, that, that larger Johnson Drive project.
Okay, so.
When that's scheduled for 2026. So we'll start designing that. Design of that and.
That's five years we're going to start on it?
The construction in 2026, we're going to start on the design. We will start on the design. I mean, that whole phases.
Because we did the data collection on that, what, a year and a half ago?
Yes. And we talked about the fact that we would, we would, we're planning to incorporate that with the improvements to that section of Johnson Drive.
Okay. On another note, we're going to the Congress of Cities next week. They are reinstituting the Energy Efficiency Community Block Grant Program, which could really be a benefit for small cities, especially like ours through EPA. We asked for that, stopped back in 2017 and on the Energy Committee that I said, we asked for that to be instituted and they actually accepted it. So that's going to be on the, the highlight for looking at small grants for cities and we'll bring back more information next week.
Yeah, Leah?
I just wanted to say maybe for the code enforcement, might be interesting to put an article in the Mission Magazine. So homeowners and businesses know what, what some of the, you know, codes that are being looked at are. So they're more aware of things that they might be able to do themselves to bring themselves into code. I think someone told me not long ago that the numbers on the houses had to be a certain size. I know mine aren't, but I wasn't even aware of that. So just little things like that.
That's a good suggestion. So typically we have included in not this first issue, but the second issue after the grass really starts growing and some things we've done. And these are the top, you know, from a residential perspective, we've tried to promote those codes, but we haven't really done it on the commercial side. And that's a good suggestion as well. I think we could provide some resources, resources there. So I'm going to keep moving just in the interest of time.
Oh.
Well, yeah, but, but you switched me over right when Laura said she was going to move on.
That's okay, we're waiting.
I was going to hold any comment, but it felt like other council members were giving commentary on, you know, just maybe areas where there's heated attention. For me, I think first of all, kudos staff and Sally, thanks so much for buying a lot of these priorities and always helping us all stay on the same page. I think the only area, at least where I have heard from some small business owners is just that need for continued relationship building and, and growth. I know it was a challenge not getting a lot of survey feedback results from and the small, our town hall, which was fabulous. But just, I feel like that's the area where we may need just a little bit more attention in this next year. But again, feel free to hold any commentary on what I just said till an appropriate time in the conversation tonight.
Okay, next slide, please. So then in our council budget survey, which you won't have to take this year, which really, really, really want to. The top priorities that came out were street maintenance, stormwater, infrastructure maintenance and economic development. Again, I think it's been pretty clear how we have responded to particularly the first two. Both with acceleration of stormwater and street repairs, or at least on the stormwater side, beginning to allocate more funding each year for both maintenance projects. And then again, as we have the results of this study that is currently underway. Economic development, again, and this kind of goes back to Councilmember Thomas's point and several others. I think this is the area where we would say we need to, we need to circle back and sort of close that loop and have some real clear direction and set some priorities for the coming year. That's the one that has probably received the least amount of attention over 2022. Again, so those were the top priorities, just in terms of percentage and number of votes. Other priorities identified through that survey, acceleration of stormwater and street repairs, large-scale park and street investments, planning tool to design downtown to attract desired businesses that fits, I think, in that economic development category. The permanent mental health co-responder funding, complete streets and trails. So many of those are being addressed in some of these larger sort of categories. Next slide, please. So then on the next two slides, we kind of just touch on the key performance areas that were established as a part of our May retreat. So we had five areas, infrastructure, parks and recreation, municipal operations, sustainability and economic development. And we sort of developed statements around, statements of intent around each one of those. And I won't read all of those. You can see them there. And then last year as a part of the budget process, and I included this in the, the work session memo, in each of those categories, we identified, you know, sort of how much in the 2023 budget had been allocated to each of those key performance areas. And you can see far and away, infrastructure at $13.1 million overall and continues to be, I think, the, the city's highest priority. And that's a combination of current pay-as-you-go projects, debt service on previous projects, studies and plans and implementation. Parks and Recreation, we saw particularly after we knew we had the renewal of the park recreation sales tax kind of continued emphasis and movement in that direction. We heard, I think, both the community and the council about the desire to really shift and have an emphasis and a focus on improvements to our outdoor park system. And I think just based on some of the other things that we shared, it's almost quite honestly more than our little city can handle in one year, trying to have probably three parks projects going. So we're working on how to do that effectively and efficiently, but still trying to take advantage of the resources that are available and really have as immediate impact as we can. Municipal operations, and again, included in this category at about just a little over a million dollars are really just those things that were included in the memo that I would call more supplemental or unique or value-added programs. Obviously, in our $13 million general fund operating budget, we're providing all of those other core municipal services and programs, whether that be public works or police or anything else. And I'm happy to review specific projects in the memo and I'll touch on a couple of those in a minute. But then in the sustainability category, there was about 638,000 allocated in a number of categories that aligned with priorities that have been established over the last several years, particularly as it relates to building and enhancing the urban tree canopy and some other initiatives. And then economic development, kind of those things which are clearly in our lane. And again, I think this is an area where we go back and we look at probably in the 2024 budget. Where, where do we need or want to kind of supplement that? So just kind of very quickly and looking at each of those, those areas, I'll try to touch base. I mean, many of the things in the infrastructure, infrastructure category have already happened. They're funding related, transfer related. So you'll remember that we increased the transfer to the street program. And we added by taking our ARPA fund allocation and accepting that under the $10 million sort of exception for lost revenue that gave us greater flexibility and being able to look at expending those dollars. So we upped the street transfer and we added $500,000 to that. Those things in combination are primarily, excuse me, what allowed us to be able to proceed with both the Fox Ridge project and the 2023 street preservation program as, as planned. So I think we're able to really see the immediate and take advantage of that immediately. As you know, Fox Ridge is designed, bid, ready to go out to construction. We also just this week submitted, we've submitted several grant applications related to the Fox Ridge project. We submitted a base grant application last year. We were obviously unsuccessful in that. We have just this week submitted a community funding, 2024 community funding application to Representative David's office. We'll know in a couple of months whether each representative is able to submit 15 projects from their district. So I don't know that we'll make it onto the list of 15, but we at least got in line and to be considered for that. So I think we've really been actively pursuing, and I think I shared last week or a couple of weeks ago, but we'll continue to compliment Celia's work on the STP grant application that got us $6 million closer to funding that next phase of Johnson Drive. Preliminary project study, as we've talked about for the Rock Creek Channel, debt service, the pedestrian activated stop signs. And as now that kind of the big projects are out and on the street and bid and construction will start, then throughout the course of the year, staff sort of turns their attention to traffic stripes, traffic striping programs, curb and sidewalk program funding, some of those other ancillary or supplemental traffic striping programs, curb and sidewalk program funding, some of those other ancillary or supplemental uh, projects as it relates to street and infrastructure.
Do you want some of us that are going to be at NLC to talk to uh, Representative Shreees Davids about that grant? Or is that something that?
I, it can't hurt. Um, I mean, we submitted letters of support from um, Representatives Ausley and Shu and Senator Corson, Northeast Johnson County Chamber, Johnson County wastewater. Um, but it never hurts to put in a plug for whatever we can get.
And we do have our own individual meeting this year, so we should be able to cover that.
Um, parks and recreation, again, we touched a little bit on the earmarks that are there kind of in anticipation of uh, the grant funds that we may receive to proceed with the dog park at Streamway, but while we're waiting on that, uh, we've got plenty of other things in progress, uh, both in design and construction uh, that are moving forward. Um, I think we touched on last, or at the committee meeting, uh, we're trying to hire the part-time maintenance staff and having some difficulty in being able to secure staff there. But we will continue to do that. Um, and then just our regular sort of, you've already approved the slide maintenance um, for 2023. You'll have some other just sort of bread and butter CIP improvements that will be coming forward. I mean, municipal operations, we have a hundred thousand dollars budgeted for the zoning code update. Um, that process will proceed after we get the comprehensive plan updated. I know many are anxious to get that moving. Um, we currently have the, we're recruiting for the building inspector's position. We have had a lot of conversations as we interviewed last week for the Budget and Finance Manager's position about implementation of the financial management software. So that's on hold until that position is here and we can let them get their feet wet a little bit. And then vehicle replacement, we're struggling particularly with the CSO vehicle replacement and finding a, any vehicle that's available to meet the department's needs. So supply chain issues continue to, actually, I think we may be seeing some greater impacts now than we have in the last couple of years as it relates to that. So doing some preliminary planning for, we know we're on schedule to replace the frontline patrol fleet. Typically, we do that through a lease purchase arrangement, um, next year, but trying to be out ahead of that. And then, uh, in April, um, we'll be coming forward with a contract award for the license plate reader, uh, technology. And then, um, following, we'll award that contract and then we'll bring back, the chief will bring back a policy, a recommended policy as it relates to that. So those things are moving along and you may recall that we did have an appropriation fund, um, that covered the cost of those license plate readers. From a sustainability standpoint, we talked about the greenhouse gas inventory. We were successful in getting, um, the planning sustainable places, phase two grant. We had some additional dollars that were allocated to us to be able to complete a bike ped plan. So we'll be able to do that for less than we anticipated. We've started the conversations with various, um, sort of contractors about the design and replacement of plantings along Jase Johnson Drive to be reflective of kind of more native plants. Um, and then again, from the economic development standpoint, you'll kind of see the things that have been allocated there. There, there are several things in, as I mentioned in the work session memo. Uh, well, actually, let's go to the next slide, please. And then other planned projects or issues that have required time or money in kind of this, we anticipate both in this first quarter and probably lapping over into the second quarter. Comp plan updated adoption, we have the schedule for moving that forward. Uh, we have our first joint work session on that on April 10th. The feasibility study results, which are coming forward March 29th. Municipal court software implementation, I think we got over the last hurdle with being able to accept online payments, uh, in the last month. Um, FCIP improvements, it's sort of cleanup, learning how to effectively understand the dashboard monitoring and um, just being able to track the systems and several things related to that. Park improvements, we've touched on financial management software. We started down, um, a path of short-term rental policy discussions. We've got the zoning regulations for, um, tobacco and e-cigarette retailers, incentive requests on development projects. Many of these things we've, we have already touched on. So those are the things that in addition to kind of work on these other priorities that, um, staff time and effort and energy has been focused on. Some of the projects that were included in the 2023 budget, um, we're going to need to revisit as in the coming months because we're seeing price increases. Um, specifically, the projects that we're kind of aware of and dealing with at this time relate to the building permitting and code enforcement software. Uh, which will be bringing forward, um, next month for you. And then classification and compensation updates particularly related to police. Although we were having a conversation yesterday at staff meeting, uh, it's Celia and her sort of metro public works directors meetings, we're seeing a lot of pressure really in all areas. Um, the labor market just continues to sort of squeeze our ability and, and we need to be very thoughtful. It's important. We need to be thoughtful and, um, competitive in terms of recruitment and retention of our employees, uh, but we also have to think about long-term sustainability. Because these are not one-time expenses. So we'll be having a lot of conversations around that, um, coming up. Next slide, please. So kind of revenue considerations and things that we're watching in 2023 and 2024. Couple of spoiler alerts. Um, we, we will continue to see and are anticipating, uh, strong appraisals and valuation from the county appraiser. We met with them a couple of weeks ago. And we're anticipating about a seven to nine percent overall increase in our assessed valuation for 2024. Uh, at this point, it looks like one mil will generate about $209,000, uh, in the 2024 budget. That's about $10,000 more per mil than last year. So had a huge jump, but it again, significant gain there. We, we see the continued interest in development that we mentioned. We see some on hold and now we're starting to see um, those that are proceeding, uh, coming forward with a request for incentives. So we've got that sort of factoring in the bigger picture of the budget. Uh, we've had some Boda settlements, so dark store theory. Supreme Court ruled on dark shore theory, but essentially put it, the decision in the hands of the Board of Tax Appeals. Uh, and so those cases, the Johnson County Appraiser's Office has actually settled, uh, most of those cases and they're, they are, have been able to share with us the specific, um, revenue impacts and or refunds that will be required. So it looks like about $150,000 is what we will be refunding over the course of this budget year, uh, with respect to, um, Boda settlements. Um, and, and we aren't seeing an ongoing reduction in appraised valuation in that instance. So sort of that refund and then probably a li- a little bit more stability going forward. I think we're going to continue to see, or we'll have to really watch for sort of impacts of inflation on purchasing habits. And how that impacts our sales tax revenue, at least for the first two months of this year. Things have been pretty stable. We've had the greatest amount of fluctuation in this last month's, um, used tax revenue receipts, which those, those have a tendency to have big swings, uh, over time, just depending on what people are purchasing. So at least right now, we look like we're tracking consistently or, or slightly above where we were in 2022. One of the things that we've spent, and the mayor and I in particular, um, the last two to three weeks, um, has been some really interesting activity, uh, in the legislature as it relates to um, revenue streams for the city, particularly, I think everybody's familiar with the legislation that was going to phase out the sales tax on food over, um, a three-year period. And then I think the governor had expressed interest through the course of her reelection campaign of advancing that or accelerating that timeline and having that go away in January. So there was a bill that was actually within here, had a hearing yesterday. And again, today, it was in committee today. That would have taken that sales tax on food to zero effective January of 2024, but also then scraped in the local portion of sales tax, um, not just the state portion. And so we've been working through, uh, LGR to submit testimony that really laid out that not only the financial impacts, which would total somewhere in the neighborhood of 950 plus thousand dollars annually for us if we were to lose that revenue. But also sharing with them the fact that we've issued debt that was tied to revenue streams associated with that. And so not only are you taking that away and how it funds our basic operations, but now it's sort of like you have the potential to have this double whammy, if you will, on operating funds because now you, if you can't meet your debt service obligations with those sales tax revenues, those are G, GO bonds backed by the city's full faith and credit and we have to pay them somehow. So I think it did not, uh, advance out of the tax committee this afternoon. But because it did advance out of one committee, there's the potential for, it's not dead for the entire legislative session. So we'll be watching that very closely. And there's a number of other sort of associated things going on with the, um, local ad valorem tax sharing programs and some other things that it's been an interesting session in just terms of feeling defensive and how to sort of protect the revenue streams that we have. So we will continue to watch those. Hopefully that we'll have all of those resolved by the uh, time we get to, um, our May work session and we'll be able to really paint a clear picture about what we think we're dealing with. Um, so next slide, please. So what's missing? Um, we've been talking a lot as a staff about, uh, most of you have probably seen the rocks, pebbles, sand exercise in terms of time management or, or project management. Um, and so a- as we think about that, um, and, and as I think I look at the priorities that we have and the projects that we're working on, I feel like we've got the right rocks in the bottom of the jar. And even though from a staff perspective, we often feel frustrated because of the sand that gets poured in, I think we still are, you know, we, we feel frustrated oftentimes in not being able to devote as much time to advance those bigger priority projects. Um, because there is just the everyday life, you know, sort of that, that goes on. And so um, I think we're having a lot of conversations around all of that. And so I, I would sort of open it up to say, I mean, we've talked a little bit about the economic development piece, the commercial code enforcement piece. If there are other big rocks that you feel are missing from our priority list, or are we really just talking about how best to allocate time to advance those projects and then to communicate with you when we have slowdowns because of unanticipated things that may, you know, pop up and arise and require us to divert our attention for a little while.
Yeah, Debbie.
I think that particular part spurs right back into the economic development discussion because the more businesses we can keep going on Johnson Drive. That's a revenue source as well as, uh, kind of an incentive for people to get out and walk and kind of go to our businesses. So when we get a chance, when we get the work session going on the economic development, I think that will be, uh, a great opportunity for us to look at options for how we expand the business community and how we interface with them.
Anything else from anyone?
I did, I did have, and I don't know if it's more of a budget or a, um, time thing, but we've had uh, several discussions around public safety and in particular in connection with our aging multifamily projects. So I just want to make sure that that remains on the list. And then also I know our municipal hands are kind of tied, but the, you know, increase in gun violence incidents in particular that seem, feels like we're seeing recently as well.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, we've we've talked and as a staff, kind of looked at, I said, you know, what are your, what are your priority projects? So what, what are you working on this quarter into next quarter? Um, how much of your time are you spending on routine daily administrative type tasks? Um, you know, and there are just things that happen. For example, you know, something that we don't think about is as we make this transition and losing our, um, accounting manager, Brian's spending, last two weeks ago, he told me 75% of his time. I'm guessing he would up that to 99% of his time right now on trying to get all of the documentation to the auditors that, that they need. Um, you know, and, and at the same time trying to, um, advance um, and, and recruit and interview, which we did last week, I think I mentioned for the budget and finance manager. So that some of those kinds of things, because our bench isn't deep um, in any department that when we have those position vacancies. So Penn has had several of those for the course of a year at the community center. And Celia's had some, and I mean, every department has experienced that, the police department. And so as we've had those, those tend to be some of the biggest things that divert that time, uh, away from, um, wanting to come back to uh, some of those other projects. So I do think that, and, and I can, we can share that as we go through the budget process, but I know on the chief's priority list, it relay, you know, the recruitment and retention is a top priority, but crime prevention, crime reduction strategies is high on the list as well as trying to get, um, some statistics. Uh, so there's a change in software systems, right? Um, just when we thought we were learning the new system, they've gone and changed their reporting software on us again. And so we're exploring resources about how to get that information in a way that helps us have meaningful conversations around, you know, what we want to allocate. So I think all of those things are there and we can continue to sort of share those. But we've also said as a staff, you know, where don't be afraid to be honest about where you need additional support, right? I'm, I'm having, I know this is a priority and I'm having difficulty keeping up with that. And so for example, um, we were able last week to bring an individual in on a contractual basis to do some of the really nitty gritty stuff related to the audit. So being, having the opportunity to explore some of those kinds of things and supplement and to not feel like, um, everybody has to take everything on all the time, um, is something that we've really been focused on. Uh, and we'll continue to be focused on over this year because I think that ultimately at the end of the year generates the highest degree of success for all of us. So we appreciate your time, um, and we'll look forward to.
I think can have one more.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
A couple of things. First of all, with regards to the municipal operations, are we looking at space again at all in terms of utilization? And what options might, might we have for finding space for staff? It's necessary.
Uh, I don't know what the options are yet, but yes, that, and I identified that in, in, you know, so in addition, so in the 2024 budget, I think in addition to all of these things, we, I referenced developing a meaningful and sustainable approach to employee compensation and then the space limitations uh, that we have. Um, again, it all comes down to dollars and cents. And until we get a clearer picture of what the landscape is going to be going into 2024, it makes it really difficult, uh, for us to feel comfortable and, you know, bringing something forward or recommending something.
Um, I'd like to echo the issue of public safety because I know that there've been catalytic converters stolen and all sorts of things that are going on in, in the area. And Casey, for instance, doesn't allow anybody to park their cars overnight on their parking lot because of that issue. I know that there've been some break-ins in some of the local businesses. So I don't know what kind of public safety issues you're tracking, uh, chief, but I know that there is concern about that, just in general, I think it's probably partly due to the economy as well.
And unfortunately not unique to us as well, you know, and that's.
Yeah, I think the, certainly the license plate, uh, trackers and things of that nature are probably helpful. Uh, the last comment that I'd like to make is that I do think that we need to philosophically, philosophically look at the time and effort that's spent on the adoption, the family adoption program and the impact that that has on the community center, uh, staff as well as others. I think that that's an area that we really have to have an honest look at in terms of is that a core aspect of what we want to do? And, and, and I, you know, I would certainly welcome comments from others in regards to the amount of time and effort that's spent both in use of the space as well as staff and storage issues that, that occurred during that period of the holidays.
Yes, Trent?
Yeah, I'm not, I have echoing.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm echoing Ken's comments, just more in general about the community center, though. I'm looking forward to the feasibility study, as you know, and I'm hoping we can really examine with a, you know, business-friendly eye on how we can kind of make some improvements of that space as well, so.
All right. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
All right. So we've got to think about a five-minute break before we will start in on our council meeting.